Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the June 18th, 2018 Hingham School Committee meeting at 7:32 PM. First item of business is to receive the proposed memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Bus and Van Drivers Association and to act as appropriate. Liza O'Reilly, Chair of Salary Negotiations, will take it from here.
Thank you. And tonight, Mary Power, our Board of Selectmen, is with us because, as law requires for union contracts, we have a member of the Board of Selectmen to vote with us. Just to give a summary, this is the final union agreement from our negotiations of the -- for the fiscal years 2018 to 2020. It's a three-year agreement. We came to -- it was a very pleasant and cordial negotiation. We have 20 bus drivers, eight van drivers in the bargaining unit. We came to an agreement with 2% across the board for cost of living increase. It does provide an extra hour for paid time when a driver has to go for their Department of Transportation physical without a loss to their attendance bonus. It also provides a minimum of four paid hours for all trips starting after 6:00 PM, as opposed to three hours. We were able to increase the safe driver bonus, which is a good benefit for everyone. And we also granted an additional paid -- or a paid personal day for each member, which is similar to our other union agreements. And we also were able to introduce some work rules, which we will work with them together to develop and finalize. And we also are including the time reporting requirement that is similar to all other union agreements that we implemented this year for all hourly employees. And there were some other housekeeping issues. So that's summary of the agreement. Any questions at the moment?
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Hingham School Committee and the Hingham Bus and Van Drivers Association for the period covering July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, if people are prepared to vote, roll call vote. Yes?
No.
Nope. So all in favor of a proposed memorandum of agreement between the Hingham Schools and the Hingham Bus and Van Drivers Association? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We do have copies of the agreement, three copies for some of you to sign tonight.
Okay.
Does Mary need to sign physically? Or no?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item number three on the agenda is approval of minutes, but we do not -- we didn't have minutes in time for the packages, so we'll approve minutes at our next meeting. So item number four, your question and comments. So audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed, but we have also set aside about 15 minutes on the agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matters of general concern that are not on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. Speakers are reminded that the meeting is televised and are asked to respect the privacy of others. Comments against any individuals are not allowed per policy 3.7.5. So if any folks here tonight would like to speak, please come to the mic, introduce yourselves by name and address as well.
Hello, my name is Abby Fennelly, and I live at Nanny Lane Road.
Can I --
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, that's better.
So I have both a question and a concern, I suppose. The question being related to the concern. And as many of you, I'm sure, are aware, over the last couple of weeks, and has recently been drawn to the attention of both the students and faculty of the high school, a faculty member of the high school posted several things and reposted several things on a public Twitter account that were by nature homophobic, transphobic, sexist, isomophobic, and said individual has apologized, although the tweets once being received by the student body have created a very divisive environment in the high school and have left a lot of students feeling unsafe and unwelcome in their own school. So I guess the question that comes out of this is while we haven't seen any action against this individual, and while I don't by any means intend this to be, like, leading the ring to have said individual fired, because I don't think that's the necessary action, I don't think that this is an "I'm sorry" and "over" situation. And so I'm just wondering if there's any sort of policy in place. From what I briefly looked through of the contract and handbook, I didn't really see anything specific. And so I was just wondering if there's anything that would result in an action being taken against this individual in any manner.
So, do you want to answer first, or do you want me to respond, or to the question? Do we have a policy? So your question is, is there any policy around this type of incident that could potentially result in some sort of action, whether or not that would happen in this particular case? Just is there a policy?
No, there has not been any action taken, other than discussions, and, as you indicated, apologies, including one to me personally. We do not have a policy -- our school committee does not have a policy on use of social media, although we have discussed it on many occasions, and again this morning, having come to conclusion on that. So there is not a policy against use of social media. There's a very fine line between one's right to free speech and statements that are made on social media being not within that. That makes this a very challenging kind of matter. So we do understand, I've received a number of emails and verbal communications myself, with a lot of difference of opinion around this, and we try to respect all sides of that. But at this point, there's not anything in the teacher's contract, per se, that they have, a bargaining agreement that speaks to this issue. There are a number of people who are concerned about free speech. There are also many, many people who are concerned about children, students feeling welcome and safe in the high school, so we are certainly not neglecting that. But at this point, there's not a violation in terms of legally protected free speech, whether that's appropriate speech or not. We certainly have spoken to that in the media. Both Mr. Swanson and myself have made comments in the media that we think this is not appropriate speech, but it is free speech. And I think -- did you want to comment? Because you're going to comment later.
I do have, under Communications, I was going to also make a comment, a statement. No, no, that's fine. This is appropriate time to bring it up as well.
But I would say that I think it's commendable that you came tonight and stated your case. That's the kind of environment we want folks to have, to feel comfortable about speaking up, and you've done that, and you've done it in an articulate and polite way, so I would commend you for that.
No, go ahead. And I was just going to say, Kay Proshman is the Chair of our Policy Committee, but we did have a subcommittee meeting today about policy, and this issue did come up about trying to come up with some social media policies, guidelines, but what we could put out there in the future.
And then one other thing I just wanted to add.
Yeah.
While there has been lots of debates raging on Hingham Pinboard and the likes recently, free speech is definitely the issue that keeps coming up. And one thing I think that's important to draw attention to is that freedom of speech doesn't necessarily mean freedom from consequences relating to said speech. And what I just find most concerning is that, like, in the mission of the Hingham Public Schools, and the mission statement is to encourage skillful and responsible use of technology and respect for diverse views and backgrounds. And while I understand that these are the said individual's views, and we do have to respect that, I think that what he's saying, said individual is saying, does contradict directly with these mission statements of the Hingham Public Schools. I just think that's something that should be kept in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eden Larkin. I live at 47 Pleasant Street. As some of you know, I was one of the editors who wrote the article on the Harbor Light. I'm the editor-in-chief of the Harbor Light. And myself and my editorial staff worked very, very hard to make sure we remained unbiased and covered all aspects of the issue, dispelled misinformation and stuff like that. So I did speak to a lot of people on either side of the argument, and something I noticed is that people who supported the teacher in question, and the teacher in question himself, who I spoke to as well, recognized that what happened was wrong. So it's clear that everyone realizes what happened was wrong. And then when I talked to people from the Gay Street Alliance and students who are a part of the LGBTQ community in our school, they were saying a lot of that. They didn't feel like the apology was adequate, it wasn't enough, that it was the start of a discussion and it's not the end. But something that I'm worried about, that the students are worried about, and that a lot of the schools worried about, is that since this is the end of the year and things are coming to a close, we're worried that when the school year ends, so is this discussion, we know from Mr. Swanson's email that there is going to be sensitivity training in the fall. But since this happens so close to the end of the year, schools letting out, there's still a lot of students who feel unsafe, and there's a lot of students who feel very hurt by this and feel like they haven't gotten any closure, since it was so abrupt and since there wasn't much time to discuss it, since we only really had Friday in school, Thursday in school, I guess, to talk about it. So I was wondering, is there anything that's going to, any action that will be taken, not, like, against the teacher, but in general, to help these students feel safer, to help with the sensitivity in the school climate over the summer? Or is this something that's going to be left alone until the fall?
Well, certainly there'll be a lot of discussions over the summer, because most of the administrators do work for the entire summer, the principals do. The director work additional days, the assistant principals work additional days, all of us here work all summer. So certainly there are going to be many opportunities, and I would suggest two in particular where this might come up. One is that we have a retreat activity coming up for our senior administrators, and it's on July 10th. And we hadn't finished the agenda on what we're going to talk about, it's a full-day agenda. We invite members of the school committee to come as well in the morning, and so that's a good place to have a discussion, because we have to plan for the fall. And planning for the fall takes lots of aspects. It's planning for the curriculum, planning for activities, needs to be planning for climate as well. So certainly there are opportunities that are already built in. The school committee may have by fall, or if not, early in September, they have a planning meeting every year. So there's another opportunity that has an agenda that isn't yet finished, and the kinds of things that may happen in the fall are perfect things to put on that agenda. So I don't think we've heard the end of it. But hearing from all sides is really important. I just want to clarify what your friend said, I'm sorry, didn't remember her name. But in terms of the comment that if a student did this, then they would be reprimanded in some way, and actually, if a student simply stated his or her opinion, they wouldn't be subject to a discipline. If a student was disrespectful to another student and yelled, or pushed and shoved, or shouted, or somehow did something direct to an individual, that would be a different matter. But simply stating one's opinion isn't something that we can act on, for a student or for an adult, because it is protected free speech. So it's the action that sometimes goes with the words that is something that we can take action against.
Okay.
But thank you for coming.
Yes, and also, Eden, just quickly, and I was -- I have a little statement I was going to read, maybe I should read it now, but, yes? All right, so I will read, I'll read my comments now. But also, just so you know, that there have been some community members who have reached out and want to get a discussion going over the summer, and amongst students, grownups, whatnot. So I think that would be something that we can keep in touch with the students at the high school with, about when we could do that, what kind of forums, what kind of format that we'd take. Okay? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So since it came up, sorry, I'm going to, I'll interrupt and just read what I was going to say a little bit later in the agenda, but the school committee has received many communications over the past few days relating to students who may feel marginalized or unsupported, so I'd like to address that with the following statement tonight. Freedom of expression is a fundamental right in this country, and freedom to learn in a safe and supportive environment is part of the mission of Hingham Public Schools and a fundamental right of every student. And while students, employees, and volunteers have a right to freely express their opinions, they also have a responsibility to uphold the mission, the values, and the policies of the Hingham Public Schools. Regardless of their intention, comments or actions that mock, belittle, or are dismissive of an individual or a community are hurtful. And when those comments or actions result in students feeling unwelcome, excluded, or afraid, the mission of Hingham Public Schools has not been upheld. Recently, there has been a barrage of posts on social media and reports in the media regarding offensive comments. Apologies have been made and have been accepted by the administration, and the Hingham School Committee will be reviewing social media and other policies throughout the district. But our community can do more. We have to do more. We can take this opportunity to foster open and civil discussions, in person, not behind keyboards. And we can bring about some real change in attitudes and in mindsets. We can certainly disagree with each other, but those disagreements must be tempered with empathy and with kindness. We can be more thoughtful and less mean-spirited. We can be better. We must be better, because at this moment, there is a community of students who feel marginalized. And I, along with many other people here tonight, want to assure those students that you are accepted, you are welcomed, and you are protected, and we will do better for you. That's it. All right, other comments from the audience?
My name's Jamie Kenny, 34 North Street, and I just have a brief statement I want to read, and then I have a follow-up question. A test and other student work that has a student's name on it is considered part of the student record under Massachusetts law. Parents and students are allowed copies of tests upon request. I'm going to repeat that. Parents and students are allowed copies of tests upon request. A family that we've worked with, No Morions, the parent advocate group that Courtney and I oversee, we've worked with a family who filed a complaint with the problem resolution system within the state, and Hingham Public Schools was recently found not in compliance with the law when the school allowed the parents and the students only to view, but not obtain, copies of the student work upon request. In the letter of non-compliance, compliance, the state found that Hingham Public Schools did not comply with 603 CMR 23.07-2A, and stated the parents were entitled to copies of the testing, which identify the student and are contained in the student record. Hingham Public Schools is required to provide those copies immediately of the testing protocol to the parents, to the student, not a copy, I mean, not a viewing, a copy. With written assurance, it has provided these documents. As additional corrective action, the school must provide a memo to all school administrators regarding the requirements of this applicable code, with specific mention that testing protocols and that individuality of students and student are part of the student record and must be furnished to the student or parent with the regulatory requirement. By not complying with this law and not receiving copies of tests, students have not been allowed to learn from their mistakes. And also at issue is the amount of time that Hingham Public Schools has spent not complying with this law and with the use of taxpayer funds to dispute this complaint. When a complaint is filed against the school department, whether it's state or federal, or whether a ruling is made against the school department, federal or state, what is the procedure for notifying you guys, their boss? What is the procedure for notifying school committee? And how can we ensure that school committee is aware of every single complaint going forward?
I mean, right now, as we stand here, I don't believe there is a policy that we must be notified of actions that are, or complaints filed against the school department.
Do you guys know about that? Do you know about the ruling? Did you find out from DOT, or did you find out from parents?
Could I?
Yeah.
Well, could I add to what you said?
Yes.
Most of what you said is totally accurate. However, before we received, this has gone on for much longer than we would have asked, because there are different interpretations, not of the law, but of the regulation and the language, the definition of what constitutes a student record. They're not the same thing. There was a law that said access was fine, we've always provided access. There is a more recent definition of what constitutes a student record. There have been conflicting definitions and conflicting interpretations of that. And because there were conflicting ones, we asked for DESE.
Yeah, no, I completely support that.
Okay. For DESE to clarify that. The person who was our liaison said she forwarded the concern and requests for considering both of the interpretations, and she passed that on to her supervisor. Her supervisor went to his legal team, which I think suggests that there is some difference of opinion about interpretation.
Sorry, go ahead. I thought you were done.
And it went to that point. And before we received the written opinion that we were waiting for, I asked a question about whether or not redaction would be possible. After I asked that question, the DESE contact notified me that, yes, I will work on that. However, he couldn't do it last week. Subsequent, but he said, I will work on it next week. Subsequent to that, I got the letter that you're talking about, saying that we were in partial, only partial, compliance with the law. So we contacted him again on Friday to say, look, the deadline is here. We haven't had a response. Jamie actually made that phone call yet.
I, oh, sorry?
And he said, I will notify the parents that we have a week, because he wants to, again, go to his legal team. However, today, about 5:00, I opened my email, and I had the response from him that we had been waiting for. And by the way, when I asked, could he consider or find out if we could consider using redaction, I said to him, and whatever is the decision, we will comply with. So today, we got the letter that said, no, it was the opinion of his superiors, that redaction is not possible. And so we do intend to comply, now that we think that this is at the end of the rope. I told him that we would do that. I think he trusted that we would. We wouldn't, maybe some of you don't, but--
I totally trust that you will. That's completely not what I'm, let me be more clear. I believe that you have a responsibility to this town to absolutely fight for the interpretation that you believe. I believe that the parents have a right to fight for their interpretation. What I am really concerned with, DOT, is not letting our voting school committee in on that. And I feel like, at some level, they need to know that stuff, and they need to know when it's happening. And that's my question. I totally, even if they had ruled against this family and said, yes, you don't have to give them, that's fine, but when are you going to tell them?
I did tell the Chair, and when there are matters like this, I typically would notify the Chair. I think some of others of you know now from another source, but I--
Just in general, if we're spending legal fees, you guys should know that, what we're fighting. And it shouldn't be presented to you at the end of the year--
Jamie--
Yeah. It should be presented to you when it's happening. You guys need to have--
Jamie--
Michelle, answer your question.
There are no legal fees.
Absolutely.
There are no legal fees--
In this particular case. But how many PQs have you had filed against you, DOT?
Not very many.
Okay, well, how much have you spent in legal fees defending them?
Nothing that I can remember in the last--
Okay, well, then we'll do, we'll find out. We'll investigate.
Okay. So I was made aware of the issue and had not shared it widely, particularly because we were waiting on the decision, and we did just get that late this afternoon, around 5:00. But we had also have, Liza and I talked very briefly earlier today about having a conversation about this, and what's the proper time to bring us in? I mean, I don't know if there are, I'm guessing there are not hundreds of them, but depending on, just when should we be brought in? What's the appropriate time? And to set some sort of parameters around that.
I'm just asking as a citizen, and I'm not attacking you guys.
No, no.
I am attacking DOT. I am sorry, but DOT and I differ on a lot, and I put the blame solely on her, but I also put it on you guys. No.
Can I just explain--
Are you the Chair?
No, but she is allowed to speak.
What?
Michelle, as the Chair, learned the information as soon as it was available--
This case, Liza, I'm talking about every case.
No. We're talking about this case, this situation, you asked about this situation, and then she informed me as the Vice Chair, and that we were then, we talked today about, okay, we have to schedule a meeting to get the information, so that we can then figure out what's appropriate to share with the rest of the committee.
Okay, but to be clear, I didn't ask about this case. I brought this case to the light, so that parents know. What I asked is what you guys are doing to make sure you're in the loop sooner about stuff like this. So that's great, but that wasn't my question.
But I did answer your question.
And you did. You absolutely did, and thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have a question about that, Ashley. So you said there were differing legal opinions. Who are the lawyers you consulted?
No, not, different opinions from different legal sources about the part, the regulation, the new definition of what constitutes a student record. That is much more recent than the law. And we had legal opinions for many, many years. People would question, and we would get a legal opinion about which there was no confusion, that the law says access and making them available at any time at the parents' convenience to actually see all of the records and see them as often as they wanted, but not to take possession. So the definition of what constitutes a student record changed that. And when it was changed, there were all kinds of questions about what that really meant in terms of different kinds of records. And there were some exemptions that some attorneys think say, doesn't matter. The goal of all of this, for those of you who don't know, is to try to maintain security of common kinds of assessments that we would want to use with other students from time to time, and give some protection to that. There's a background for that. It involves cases before we had this kind of a policy practice with all the departments that records have been, not records, I take that back, assessments have been compromised. We had an incident many years ago where we had a tutor who tutored many children in this town and used to advertise that I now have copies of all the tests and quizzes for these teachers. And we feel that's not fair to students who are taking a test where some students, who could perhaps afford a tutor, could have access to the actual test being taken. So we've had kind of a firm school practice in school, it's in the school handbook, for many years. And that's what we're trying to protect. We're not trying to disadvantage any child, let alone a child with special needs, but we also have a responsibility to all the students. And so that's why we wanted to get this right, and to take every opportunity that we could.
So I guess my concern is the clarification from DESI about the fact that tests are part of the student records, and how you, what the exemptions are, have been on the website since 2005. So it's really not that recent. And that's why I'm concerned with who you're getting the different legal opinions from.
Attorneys.
But that doesn't cost money?
No, no.
Which attorneys? Which attorneys?
They are attorneys that volunteered information that we didn't have to pay for.
Okay, so. So, I mean, obviously, there are a bunch, there are several issues inside this one issue, right? So that we'll have to deal with as a school department, as a committee, and with parents and students. So rest assured, we are definitely going to be speaking about all the aspects of this, and it will take accommodation, it will impact many different committees, as well as the overall committee as well. Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We do appreciate them, and we will be focused on those items in the future. So thank you. Item number five on the agenda is superintendent's report. So DOT.
Thank you. There are a number of, get the picture right here. There are a number of good things, obviously, happening. Do we have a student reporter? Because I never want to trump what she's going to say. But anyway, over the weekend, we had a state, a national track meet, and a relay team, and a freshman, and a student who is our high jumper, came in 14th in that competition, and outstanding results as well from both the boys on the track team and our freshman athlete. So we're very proud of that, and congratulations to all of them. I want to comment, in particular, we have a long agenda and a long ways to go, so let me just share one of the good news things with you. There is-- There is a fairly new award at the high school, and this is an email that just describes it. And it was the brainchild, I guess is the appropriate thing to say, of two of our directors, Andy Hoy and Erica Pollard. Andy in social studies, Erica is foreign language. And they came up with an award that was called the Catching Kindness Award. And the first celebration of that award was back in December. It was on a morning before school, breakfast kind of event. And the second award occurred just recently and I went to see it. Pretty impressive, pretty efficient event as well because between 7:30 and 8:00, you could have breakfast and see a lot of kids recognized for a lot of wonderful things, kind things. There are lots of opportunities in our district for kids to get big awards and public applause for all kinds of things, whether they be activities or particular talents that they have or athletic events or whatever. But these kids were recognized for simple, everyday kindnesses. And I want to show their names there. I do believe that Andy has sent the article to the newspaper, but great, great kids and great things that kids have done. I will also say that at this event, they announced that from here on, this is going to be called the Andrew Warhaf Tig Catching Kindness Award. And the parents were there to hear that. And so the next time you see this report, which I think will be sometime in late, sometime in late fall next year, that will be the name for the awards. That made it doubly special, but really a wonderful, warm, friendly event. And all of these kids were rewarded with a certificate that was presented by Andy Hoy or by Erica Pollard. So that's a good news event that you'll hear more about. There are a couple of letters in there that are from individuals recognizing things like Memorial Day ceremonies at Plymouth River. So there's a letter in there for that. There was something that was printed in the paper by the journal, but it was written by David Sargent, and David is a well-known representative of our veterans groups and talks about this award, this Memorial Day ceremony in general. So can hold on, other things. There's another parent who's writing about complimenting a counselor. And I always like to include those things in your packet as well. So we can move on to communications, I believe.
All right. Do we have a facilities report? Sorry.
Facilities reports.
May-June facilities report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, you have the May-June facilities report in there. I'm not sure where it is. Maybe it didn't get in.
No, it did.
It did.
Excuse me?
Before the email.
Just go back one.
One and two.
Okay, so we get this report monthly from Doug Foley, who's facility and procurement manager, and Katie Hartman, who's the maintenance and custodial supervisor. And it features the projects that have been completed in May and then looks forward to the projects that are in process for June. So you all have copies of it and probably have read it, but I'm always amazed at the number of things that are done. And some of them you'll recognize as having appeared on last year's capital list and that are being finished up. And I would also point out, we're going to have at the next meeting, Rick Swanson will be here to talk over the high school and the ASK report that you all received two meetings ago, I think now. And so some of the things that are here reflect some of the things that appeared in that report as physical needs that needed to be at least planned. And you'll be suggested in the process of completing those. So we provide this every month and this will be the last one for this year.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, item six is communications. So 6.1, communications received by superintendent. Do you have any others other than what you've shared?
No.
No? Okay. Typically, we have student communication from Emma, but she's not here. I don't see her today. All right. Any other communications? I did mine already, so very good. All right, then item 7.1, to receive the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee annual report from our.
So you have the paper report. And Tim is going to do the PowerPoint as soon as we can get it up here.
Are you good there or you could also go behind the podium if that's, and then the audience can have it?
I might just move your mic onto the, yeah, just let you right up. There you go.
All right. Okay.
So you need.
Should we work out a system of like a point two and you fast forward?
Excuse me?
I don't, I don't know what the system is for.
I thought you wanted to do it. You want me to?
He wants to do it from your computer, though.
Oh, okay.
We'll just pass that computer right over.
Okay, perfect.
Or.
He's gonna, or. Very well rehearsed.
The computer can go over there, Tim. We have lots of cords, so if you just want to move it, the cord will go with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does he know where? Okay. I think it should be right there. I'm going to do this dance again.
Yeah. Hey, remember that time I broke the superintendent's computer? There we go.
Oh, you did this, right? And then we just go to, and then two advances get hit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Okay, the annual report for the, this year, I'm not going to read everything on the report. We do have paper copy, a few paper copies with me. I believe the school committee got copies of the annual, paper copies of the annual report. And it's going to be posted on the CPAC Facebook page, CPAC website. We'll make it widely available if we run out of copies tonight. So introducing the CPAC board, I'm Tim Miller Dempsey, the chair. And we have Jen Doan and Jen Van Gelder as the treasurer and secretary. Janice Sullivan, our treasurer, cannot be here tonight. So we're a solid, fully stocked board going into the new year. And so we're looking at what we think the role of CPAC is, the activities and accomplishments that CPAC has done over the past year and future directions. So really, through the role of CPAC, we see as being threefold, advising you, the school committee, on topics related to special ed and students with disabilities, and meeting with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school's special ed programs. And we have education events, including the legally mandatory Special Ed Rights and Responsibilities Workshop for Parents, which we are scheduling for October of this year. Activities over the following year, we did a comprehensive survey of Hingham Public School parents. The details of that are up there. But really, we were trying to get a overview of what the parental concerns are, since we are sort of the voice of the parents to the school committee. Develop a collaborative work plan, working with administration and other people, community members, looking at what the priorities for special ed are and what, you know, the action steps are. That is a document that's going to be going forward and edited. It's a living document, which means that we continually change it. So, and some examples of things that are on the collaborative work plan are up there. So, I mean, advised on budgeting requests. Board and liaison members met with administrators in each school building, building trust between parents and administrators. So, I don't want to go through and read all of this. But we did representative on the Hingham tiered system of support and the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force. Both of those, the HGSS is sort of the social emotional learning tier, multi-tiered support system that is going to be, I believe is going to put into place this fall, and the Special Ed Task Force. We also did a lot, had a lot of events. There's a monthly breakfast at Burgers Bagels. As I said, the Rights and Responsibilities Workshop. The, several of the big events where the, the Rights and Responsibilities, we changed that up and had several lawyers come in and do the presentation themselves. I think that was well-received this year. The other that I sort of want to go down to is Dr. Larry Epstein did a Calm Compassion Parenting, which is very well-attended and we got really good reviews on. Yep, so going through it. So it's a lot of accomplishments. I don't want to read through all of them because let's focus on the future directions. But we did have a very busy year and a very successful year, so. So the three areas of future directions we're looking at are advocacy, parent support and engagement, and education, divided up that way. For advocacy, we're looking at being advocates for special ed students and their families. So we are looking to continue to survey parents and to identify concerns and really focus our advocacy efforts, develop a relationship with the administration, especially the incoming Dr. Venus, the Student Services, Director of Student Services. And a lot of, you know, advocate that improvements will be rooted in research and evidence, prioritize transparency. And then the last, review information for the middle school evaluation and make appropriate So for parent, parent support and engagement, provide support and networking opportunities for parents to connect and share resources and really try to focus on parents new to the Hingham school system. Survey, again, survey parents, maintain online forums as a way for parents to connect, share resources, and advocate for special needs, and work to build a community of parents with special needs in the Hingham public schools. And the education, we're looking at hosting a roundtable discussion with parents to, I mean, talking specifically about the collaborative work plan, share resources, develop goals, potential workshops that, we're sort of in the planning stage of figuring out what workshops we're going to be doing over the year right now. Those are some of the examples of issues that we think that there would be interest in. That will, of course, be informed by the surveying the parents and any feedback we get from parents. And all of that's, a lot of that's very general. We're looking at the sort of concrete next steps of what we're working on right now. I think it's important that CPAC meet with the new director of student services to develop a relationship and make progress towards CPAC's goals and then make that public. Plan and host an open discussion between parents and the new director of student services. I think we're planning on that during our September. We're looking at, continue to develop and prioritize the work plan, participate in the hiring process of the new superintendent as appropriate, and help facilitate and participate in the rollout of the HGSS as the Hingham tiered support service as appropriate, the social emotional program that we're rolling out this year, the administration. For parent support and engagement, future, the concrete next steps are target parents new to Hingham Public Schools with information, resources, and educational opportunities. Again, the survey and maintain an online discussion forum. Done a lot of work with the Facebook page, making that a positive community that shares resources and just as a positive space for people. And education, we're planning the parental rights and responsibilities workshop. I think we're going to try and get the same speakers that we had last year because it was so successful. Coordinate with other area CPACs, see if there are opportunities for collaboration, really looking at the educational events that CPAC hosts. It makes sense to be able to sort of use the resources of surrounding towns and have, we can cast a broader net of events if we sort of do develop a more, a working relationship with, you know, Cohasset, Situate, Weymouth, sort of the local communities. And, yeah, and complete a schedule for training, workshops for the 2018, 2019 school year. So I know we're having a meeting over the summer to specifically talk about that, so. All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Or, I know I went through it fast. I was trying not to be the guy that talks for an hour.
I just, Tim, I'd just like to contribute that I worked on the special ed subcommittee last year and that the work plan was, I think, a really important and milestone of accomplishment of getting everybody on the same page, literally, and collaborating together. And a lot got accomplished. There's still a lot left to do, but there's a clear path forward. And so, you know, I think that was a great accomplishment that the CPAC initiated, and I'm glad to see, you know, that going forward, I think, will, will help with all the other activities. It's great that you have a full board.
Yeah.
So a lot of energy, which is really exciting and positive for all the parents and students.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you so much. And I think with, sorry, did you have a comment? Oh, sorry.
She wants her computer back.
I was going to tell you.
Thank you very much for sharing. I appreciate it. Thanks.
If anyone has any questions, Hingham, the CPAC Gmail address is up there. Drop us an email.
Thank you very much. All right.
Is this coming back over there?
No. All right, moving on to item 7.2, to receive the Athletic Department Program Review from our athletic director, Jim Quattramone. Hello, Jim, and thank you for being here.
I think you got to go right in there.
You need her computer. Jim's also going to borrow your computer.
Oh, I thought you were going to do it from there. Okay.
You got it.
Got it?
Yeah. Do I need to trade it? I'll get it, I'll get it later. Don't worry. I'll get your cord.
That's what I tried to do. Maybe we need to invest in a guest laptop. Chromebook, perhaps. Oh, that's right.
All right, I think I'm ready. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Gall, Dr. LaBillaud, Mr. Ferris. I'm excited about the opportunity to be able to present the Athletic Department Program Review. As we begin, we have several coaches here this evening to represent our department. Tony Messina, ice hockey, boys' ice hockey. Rich Terrace, football coach. John Todd, boys' lacrosse. Bob Niffen, boys' basketball. Dan Kloon, boys and girls golf. Eugene Buzinski, girls' basketball. Ryan Punteri, girls' soccer. And Andy Wayne, track. And I would absolutely like to make a special thank you and introduction to Mary Ellen Haller, the Athletic Department Assistant, who has been absolutely vital in my transition here into the, into the district. So they say a picture is worth a thousand words. Mary Ellen Jones has been a tremendous supporter of our department with her pictures. And I think as you look at that, without question to me, that is the picture of the year. And I'll talk a little bit more later on about the pride that I feel personally in the way that we support our department and the student athletes while they're on the field and the way that they conduct themselves while they're on the fields and courts and surfaces. But the determination, the relentless determination that you can see in the eyes of those young ladies, I think is, that's a picture that I'm going to hold on to. So you have the written report that I'm going to kind of parallel here, not get into the extreme detail of the written report, but I'll, I'll run an overview of the report. extreme detail of the written report, but I'll, I'll run an overview of the report and then be ready for questions at the end. Thirty-six varsity teams, total of 70 teams and three intramural clubs at the high school. When I tell my athletic director friends this, I'm the coolest guy in the room. And you guys need to understand that, that the support that you're providing this department, whether it be in resources or just the, the, the physical and emotional support of that participation decision, this is amazing. It's absolutely amazing. So we have 125 coaches in the department, athletic trainer, administrative assistant, and myself as the Director of Athletics. We participate in the Patriot League and we're a member schools of the, a member school of the MIAA. The exceptions to the Patriot League, league affiliation are ice hockey, we participate independent. Cruise sailing, skiing and golf all have different leagues as the Patriot League does not offer those programs as league sports. Support. The, the support, as I mentioned here, from your decisions in providing resources to the department, administrative decisions, to providing resources to the department and then the Hingham Sports Partnership with, with their mission of maintaining and increasing participation among our student athletes and each sport with a, a parent-driven booster group that provides those additional things that, that really help to make athletic participation, I think, here at Hingham High School special. Changes. There's the first big one. On October 2nd was my first day without the training wheels as we said farewell to, to Margaret Conady, who still is on a weekly lifeline. In two days in September, we, it's a one-day training, but we needed to do two days of the training because of the number of student leaders. So this, this particular program run by Deb and Dana Holt called Core Trainings, it, what it does is it develops positive relationships and strong character and confident displays of leadership in student leaders, student senior leaders. So we will run that again next year. I think that this program was a key to some of the positive culture that I saw in our, in our athletic department. Next, culture that we work to develop intentionally. Many of the coaches, and by the time we get to next year, hopefully all the coaches, varsity coaches, will have read Urban Meyer's Above the Line. And that, that clip there on the side, on the side is actually a page from the book. In working to develop culture, Meyer's book Above the Line helps define the how. How are we going to do this intentionally? And, and one of the key components is above-the-line behavior. There are two types of behaviors, above-the-line and below-the-line. You can see that above-the-line behavior is intentional, on purpose, it's skillful. Below-the-line is impulsive, it's on autopilot, it's resistant. And this, this approach can define coach-to-me relationships, coach-to-student-athlete relationships, student-athlete-to-student-athlete relationships. When you think about it, it's so simple, but it's extremely powerful. I had rolled it out to a few coaches and Mr. Swanson early on in the, in the school year and I knew that we were on to something when Mr. Swanson texted me a bag of chips and said, "I was going to eat these chips with my lunch, but I decided not to. It would have been below the line." Thank you, you've changed my life. I share that with you, but, but as, as these coaches who've got, you know, 20 and 30 years of experience, look at this simple tool. They take all those experiences with them and then we share and collaborate with each other and it helps turn this, this, this program that obviously has worked quite well for Urban Meyer into Hingham's program. The next component, absolutely no BCD. And you get a little tight there, but BCD is blame, complain, defend. Nothing great was ever accomplished through BCD. We're just not going to tolerate it. Onto the next thing. We have to take personal responsibility for our roles in situations. That takes you to the E plus R equals O. Okay, an event will occur that we might have no control over, but we have absolutely infinite control over our response to that event and therefore significant influence on what the outcome will look like. That R, and you'll hear coaches start to say that, focus on your R. You press pause, you consider your situation. Pause could be a second, could be a month, whatever is appropriate to your situation. Press pause, get your mind right and help influence your outcome. Taking personal responsibility in every situation, I think, is really what, what the key to that is. And then lastly, embrace the grind. Being a student athlete at a place like Hingham High School is not easy. The, the academic requirements, the, the athletic requirements, they're difficult. They're very difficult. But you can't look at it that way. Right down to the expectations of you. You have to embrace what it is we're expecting of you so that you can gain the benefit from it. I think for the most part, our student athletes are doing that. They're stepping up to the expectations. Participation is a choice and it's a privilege. They're stepping up to the expectations and they're not doing it begrudgingly. As I said earlier, they are participating in a way that personally, for me, makes me proud. It's, it's something that I'm proud to be affiliated with, something I'm proud to watch. Several clubs this year started for the first time, flag football, ultimate frisbee and rugby. Often with a club, the sport will run in club status for several years and then look to become a varsity sport. I, I don't think that's the case with flag football and ultimate frisbee, but I do think that in the coming years, we'll be looking at adding, adding rugby as a varsity sport. The interest was, the interest was 25, 25 student athletes that were attending on a regular basis. And the, the options we have are to run through the Massachusetts Youth Rugby Organization or to become a, an MIAA school, but that work will be done over the summer. Additional changes in leadership. So the Hingham High School Rowing Association hired a new program director, Logan Greeley, a new girls' coach, Jeannie Barkowitz, and new boys' co-coaches, Abby Cornet and Kelsey Mayman. I know that in, in years past, that the relationship between HHSRA and the, the Hingham Maritime Club, HMC, was at times difficult, if not interesting. I believe under Logan's leadership, we've managed to, to gain control of that situation. New coach to our boys' and girls' ski team, who I neglected to introduce there, as I'm seeing it now, Coach Audrey Knight, who in her first year won the girls' state championship and was named a Boston Globe Coach of the Year. And then head football coach. Yeah? My apologies for skipping your introduction, Coach. And then after a fairly extensive search that included community members, teachers, captains, parents, we were able to hire Jim Connor as our next head football coach. As I said to so many, back in January when we realized that Coach Aruka was moving on, it was a sad time. I worked hard to try to hold on to him and it just didn't work out for us. But I'm very happy to report to you that this situation, Coach Connor and everything he's going to bring to Hingham High School will be tremendous, is amazing and we're very fortunate to have him. He's already assembled quite a staff to get going in August. I can't believe I missed your introduction, Coach. This is, to me personally, I think, the, the most amazing thing that I've been a part of in athletics. Over the last five years, the MIAA has, has been charged with identifying strategies to, to promote inclusion within athletics. The, one of the first things that they come up with i- is this unified track situation in which student athletes are defined as the students with the disabilities, partners are defined as regular ed students that participate side by side. A meet is not run the way a typical spring track meet would be run. Instead, there are several events that they make teams and, and then rotate among. So the coaches will get together and actually pair similar ability student, student participants and then student athletes and off they go. Our home meet with Plymouth North, I believe it was this year, the sprinting events are just the loudest, highest energy events, I think, for, for, for the participants as well as for, for the fans in viewing. Coach really got off the ground in a, in a student call for meeting with Special Olympics. Ashton Burton and Ellie Haller got us all together and then quickly Nicole Piantes and Elizabeth George and Courtney Bruno's involvement as the coach, it, it all started to move quickly. It's something you want to put on your list for next year. I'll make sure that you get the schedule. Even looking at that picture is. We've had some tremendous success over the last four years and, you know, I know we're not supposed to jam slides up with all this information, but I think the message I want to get across to you here is we're having some success. Our student athletes and our coaches are working hard. I think we're doing it the right way and we're being recognized for that. Many of our teams are being recognized specifically for their, their sportsmanship within competition and these teams have been, have been recognized for that. And then many of our coaches have been recognized with Coach of the Year awards from various I think one particular to note, Coach Niffen is, is here with us tonight. Congratulations to him. Obviously Coach Knight, Boston Globe in her first year. And then Coach John Todd, boys' lacrosse, was named the National Federation of High Schools National Boys Lacrosse Coach of the Year. So there's some good news and, and now we kind of get into the numbers that I know you're interested in, in terms of participation. The first slide here with, with participation numbers is about opportunities. So the best way for me to explain that to you is that an opportunity could have one student athlete counting three times. This is roster spots. Okay? And in 2013, 14, there were 1,569 roster spots available to our student athletes. That's, that's increased to 1,814. In the packet, the, the written report, you have this year's breakdown by team. You have then a comparison of by-team totals from 1314 to 1718. I'll let you reference that. It didn't make for a great slide here. So the pie charts are the number of sports by grade and by gender. And later on, we'll give you the real numbers, but this, this gives you an idea, and we'll total them, this gives you an idea of, of how many kids are multiple sport, sport athletes So the overall total, the majority, 41%, are two-sport athletes. And then there you have the real numbers. Now please make sure that, we had a formatting error on the initial report that I submitted, so please make sure that your girls' totals that you are looking at are indicating the I wish there was a way to make these numbers presented in a little bit more of an exciting fashion, but I, again, I have to tell you, 489 and 483 in terms of totals of males and females participating is amazing. So one of the things, as you consider the number of student athletes participating, the percentage that we're looking at, again, I want to mention, the support that you're providing to this department is a, is a main driver in this. With these numbers come increased competition for roster spots. That then often causes student athletes, student athletes, excuse me, to be cut. And that's a hard process. As time has passed, the cut, I believe, is seen as more and more harsh. What we try to tell ourselves as coaches is that we're trying to help that young person hurry up and find the next thing that they're going to get involved with. It doesn't always help you get to sleep at night. But we're very fortunate in track, in wrestling, and then in, in spring track, that we have sports that basically operate as no-cut sports. We do have some increased opportunities for junior varsity participation, but those sports tend to take with open arms the young people that want to participate. Again, Unified Track will be another place for, for those student athletes to participate. So I think that it'll require yearly consideration in terms of what, what are we, what are we missing here? How many cuts are we having to, to live through to make decisions about adding if need be? But I think we are in a good spot right now with these no-cut sports as part of our offerings. Areas to improve. So three areas, and I know that this is not new to you, the three areas that we've, that we've looked at, just to put on your radar as places that potentially we can improve within our facilities. The weight room. There have been efforts to improve what is in the weight room and to clean it up. And I think some of that's been effective. I think the main issue with the weight room right now is bigger than what's in the room and more about the actual footprint of the room. We, we just don't have the space right now. Certainly, we're not going to serve 972 student athletes that are driven to embrace the grind and improve themselves. But I do think that there is a, an, an increased footprint will help us more effectively do that. Right now, young ladies just simply aren't going in the room and teams, some combination of, of boys and girls teams are going offsite and training with, in facilities and gyms and with trainers. The, the room is getting used right now and it is, it's getting used quite frequently. I just, I think it's important that I let you know, I think it's an area that we can improve. Our locker room facilities, I think we're making it work. We did work with coaches this year and PE staff to make sure that rooms were being locked so the kids had, had an option of a place to lock things up. They still are using the hallway areas to line their bags up, but, but at least we are giving them the option so that they're, they can, they can secure their things. And then lastly on this list, the coaches' meeting areas. Coaches that are teachers in the building have their own space that they can rely on and, and keep their things, have meetings, have student athletes with them. Coaches that are not right now, don't really have a space. One positive of that is that almost all of them wind up in my office at some point and it's great to be able to talk and, and check in. But a common meeting area would be very useful and I think make more efficient time for, for our staff. Transportation. So in the, in the fall, we had been renting vans for, for our smaller teams, which, you know, certainly is cost-effective, but just as importantly, provides a scheduling flexibility that if we have a finite number of buses available for, for scheduling, a, a van sends the smaller team and frees up that, frees up that bus for us. So I have had some conversations with Mr. Ferris about this, but whether it be working with the dealership to see if we can get a van donated, whether it be leasing a van or considering the, the inventory of the district, I think that for next year, we do need to look at what's going on with these vans as our, our rental company, what, they shut down that division of their, of their business. This is an issue across the South Shore, certainly with, with our Patriot League partners. We just haven't been able to find another vendor. And this is a big one. So the multipurpose field. The field is in year five, hopefully I've got that correctly, of a typical 10-year warranty. And certainly the 10-year warranty of the carpet, the actual turf, turf surface, isn't going to, you know, expire at 10 years. We should, if we're properly managing the field, be able to get a little more time out of it. There is some concern about some of the fibers on the field right now and are they coming out at a rate that isn't acceptable? I'll be meeting with the vendor over the summer to have them take a look at that. RAD, the- R E D, the contractor that did the installation recommends a budget number of $475,000 for the carpet replacement. I do think it's a little early to be talking about this, but certainly, I want it on our Another area for improvement, currently, there are six JV positions that are being funded by booster groups. And this, I think, was done initially as a creative way to increase participation numbers, create additional opportunities. I think that into the FY '20 budget that I should be exploring moving these into our budget. Some of these positions have been being funded in this fashion for up to five years. And then I think, looking ahead, a couple of areas that I plan on spending more time with students next year. Additional leadership development through specific captain councils, captains' council. One thing that I didn't anticipate, but I've seen clearly, is some clubs and organizations are flourishing by having meetings before school starts. So I think that that's something that we'll be able to do with captains' councils. And then secondly, we got this going a little bit. Organized student fan groups. I thought in the fall and in the winter, the attendance and the enthusiasm of our students were good. You know, I can think in particular of the Brighton basketball game. There was the volleyball with the pink-out night where I wondered if our bleachers were going to tolerate what was happening. But I think there's another step that we can take where students who aren't participating within a season can actually feel like the organized fan activity is an activity in itself. Gives them some ownership, the ability to be creative without just being the loudest person yelling the craziest stuff more, to enhance the experience of our student athletes. But again, let them have some involvement in activity themselves. I think the key challenge that I faced in getting this to the point that I wanted to this year has been that there just really are so few kids that aren't playing something. So it's hard to find those people that are looking for that need, to find a sense of belonging in the activity. And then lastly, the culture. We are going to drive this culture. I am convinced that with a culture development program on purpose, that everything else will come as we want it to come. The successes will be there from top to bottom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions?
I liked the title. I was actually impressed that a couple of kids walked by you and called you Coach Q.
Yeah.
I like that.
That has followed me a little easier than Quattramoni. It's been an interesting process, watching different groups figure out what they're going to call me. Mr. Quattramoni yelled out to me a couple of times. I almost wondered who they were talking to, because by my end of my time at Hull, it was Coach Q, and that was it. But Mr. Quattramoni, Coach Quattramoni, Coach Q, I'm answering.
So Coach Q, I'm very impressed. You have done quite well. You know, obviously, we have a fantastic team of leaders here in the room, coaches doing fabulous work, so I want to commend you for that. I was very biased towards soccer because my son plays soccer, obviously. But I attended a couple of the sports outside of town, and I was happy to see you there, you know, not only on the arm, but also with your wife. So it's a pleasure meeting her. One of the things I had recommended to you when we hired you is to try to forge a better relationship with the youth programs. I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to do that, but I'm not questioning you. But I would reiterate that the importance of going out there, meeting with the youth sport teams, and getting the kids to understand what it takes to play for varsity or at, you know, at the varsity level when they come to this age group. So if you have not done that, I would encourage you, please do that, and also bring some of your coaches to speak about the programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Much of that work right now has been done through the coaches. I do agree with you. I think that my presence is certainly of value there, and we'll take note of that.
Great. Thank you.
So I am biased towards wrestling because my son was a wrestler, and we had had great success. And I was telling Dr. Gallo just the other day how we, my husband and I, attribute his life to wrestling because it forced him, he forced himself because of wrestling, to be a better student and to be a better person in general. And Coach Caniff is terrific, and I applaud all of you for working with the students as much as you do. I want to point out that the wrestling team won the Patriot League championship six years in a row. There's four here, but it's actually...
Yeah. So the window where I was reporting was since the last program review. I did... It did occur to me that leaving that sixth one out didn't make sense, so I'm glad you pointed it out.
So there's that. And then I'm sorry for my ignorance in this question, but what does roster opportunity mean? I don't understand that number. I'm just looking at this year's 1,814.
No, it can be confusing. So let's just shrink things down for a second. If we have a basketball team with 15, we have a Boys Lacrosse team with 20...
So you're talking about varsity positions or...
This, the number that... Let me finish, and then we'll back up to that. A basketball team, one team, 15 positions. A Boys Lacrosse team, 20 positions. A track team, 20 positions. 55 roster opportunities. So it isn't necessarily that we're capping. It's that that's how many student athletes have taken advantage of being able to be on one of those rosters. The number that you're asking me the question about is all teams, except the clubs. So if you look back to... Do you have your packet with...
Yes.
With this year's breakdown on freshman varsity and JV?
Yes.
So if you look at that, that is the total, that totals to the 1,800 number. But as I said, one person could count up to three times if there were three sports student athletes.
Okay. So it's varsity and JV?
And freshmen if the team is offered.
And freshmen. Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. It can be confusing.
I just want to say another thing I forgot. So I am the chairman of the long-range planning, and thank you for bringing up the areas of need improvement. So we are fully aware of your need, of our need, to do something with the Health and Wellness Center. We hope to bring that up again this year. But most importantly, we will need parents and students, and obviously, we have the student buy-ins, but we need parents because we may have to come up with a creative way to raise some funds to fix that place up. Just so you know, that is still part of our conversation this year.
Appreciate that, and certainly look forward to working with the group.
I just wanted to commend you for your work on the culture. I want to go read Above the Line now because it sounds like a great book. And I also noted when, earlier, when Dr. Gallo had the list of students who have the Catching Kindness Awards, a lot of student athletes were on there, so that's great. Are you doing any work with the Climate Change Committee at the high school and collaborating with them?
We've communicated, and I'm thinking that the Climate Change Group might be a group where I'm going to have better success with the organized fan group. So more to be done.
Yeah.
But yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have questions. So on the turf replacement, let's plan right now on, because five years can go like that. And if we don't start planning that now, you know, we don't want to get caught with that. So I said, we should have already been doing something to get to that goal. So I'm all for that.
Okay.
As far as the vans, I would hope that there's something we can do with our own fleet or even looking at that because we've been, you know, adding, we added a bus for Mecca. We, you know, maybe there's a van that we can get some flexibility with.
They did. They used to rent from Burke. But we do have in capital a purchase this year for another special ed van, you know, and I had talked to Jim, there's a possibility we could repurpose that instead of calling it surplus and selling it, you know. It still would have high mileage, but it probably would suffice for the small teams, the golf team. We try to travel, take them as often as we can. I mean, I know Patrick even provides some vans, but, you know, all depends on the schedule. But maybe one of them would just transfer over to athletics, and it could be the athletic van, you know? And, you know, we could do that a couple of years in a row.
Yeah. And, yeah, we've had success having more flexibility with our transportation, so I would think that would make sense and probably save us some money. So that, I think, is worth looking at. And I have a question about the... Oh, I have an easy one for you. Are all of our MIA sports now Division One due to enrollment? Or why...
No. Most have moved up due to enrollment. Boys basketball, girls' basketball. There are a couple outliers. The decision is made based on enrollment. The new cycle started this year. It was decided last year. Margaret had gone before several committees to appeal the placement upward without much success.
Okay. All right. So then I was looking at the charts of the, by grade, of the boys and the girls. And it looks like with the girls that there are a lot of freshmen that participate, and then by senior year, there are fewer girls participating than boys. And so I was wondering if, what your thoughts were on that. And then I was also wondering, we had talked about this a couple of years ago on School Committee, of whether to have policies or practices about what sports freshmen were allowed to participate on. And so I was wondering, are freshmen taking some of those varsity spots, and then seniors aren't choosing to participate? Or do you have a philosophy about that? Or so it's kind of a combined question.
Yeah, there's a lot there, too. I think, to answer the first question on what's happening as the girls get older, that jumped out at me. I mean, the number 17, it's not a huge number, but it's a number there. And so my next steps with that will be talking to the girls' coaches. One thing that I did find in my previous stop was that often, young ladies were, instead of fighting to stay with programs, seeing somebody pass them and deciding not to take the competition, the challenge, to stand up to it. I think that that's the worst thing that we can have happen. And so done a lot of work in trying to change that culture. I need to identify what the issue is first before I can really give you a good answer to it. So my next steps in regard to that will be talking to our girls' coaches just to get their sense of what they're seeing and feeling. In terms of freshman participation, I think that on the level that we're participating athletically, first of all, I would say it's not common. I can only think of one off the top of my head, of a freshman that was a, you know, a high-level contributor to a team. But if you've got somebody that can help with the in-competition success, I think it's hard to tell a coach that you can't have that person with your group. Because usually, in a school of our size, that jump is, you're talking about an exceptional talent. On the other hand, you know, I certainly don't want to see coaches cutting one senior as we're looking at...
Yeah, I mean, then do you get into the issue of that competition? And do you, you know, are you pushing out people for, you know, chasing a championship versus embracing...
I think the way that you put it there...
The experience.
Right. I think the way, if I saw that something like that was occurring, that can be, outside of that special talent, that can destroy programs. And so I think before we ever got to a point where I was standing before you and you were saying, "I think I'm seeing that," I would have already acted. There's definitely a balance there that can be achieved without getting to that. And that'll just be with me regularly monitoring.
Yeah. And it came across my mind when I looked at these numbers. I have girls, my oldest, three sports, 11 letters, still competing in college athletics. My middle one played two seasons, went on to do other things.
Right.
My younger one coming up plans on playing two sports. So I'm across the board of seeing that level and passion and abilities. So I just, you know, to me, it's let's get as many people involved. We have a lot of championships. Do we have to get it every single year? Or do we get as many people as possible participating? You know, that's something I would really want to...
Right. I would agree. Participation numbers are huge numbers, and what we can do to increase those, I think, is important. But at the same time, if I play Monopoly with my daughter, who's 14, I'm going to own everything before we go to bed.
Well, yeah.
So...
There was a blackish TV show. You should look up when that family played Monopoly. But then the other question I had was regarding the clubs. These are, I'm assuming, they're all male participation?
Rugby, yes. Ultimate Frisbee, no. Flag football, yes.
Okay. Okay. So I looked at the numbers, and I'm sensitive about what our requirements are of what we achieve and keeping it even and...
Yeah, it's interesting. When I did the participation numbers, male to female, it's like .01 difference. They're both locked in at the 78%. And I would share your concern and your focus on those numbers.
And, yeah, and just, you know, when we get boosters involved and making sure that it's equal of what, how we're investing and sharing.
And I will be, I will, we're starting the next round here with the next round of leaders in our boosters groups, and I'll be meeting with those groups to discuss what their plans are to make sure that they're falling in acceptable ranges.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Excellent work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. All right. Item 7.3, to receive notification of the appointment of Colleen McDonald, School Psychologist Chair at Plymouth River School, and Louis Pires, Science Mathematics Teacher at Hingham High School. Welcome to both of them. Item 7.4, to receive notification of the resignation of John Pearson, Music Teacher at East School. Thank you, John. Item number eight, other items as may not be reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Anything?
28 hours.
There. 48 hours? You got the... Is that you have 48 hours?
The mask. Mask on.
Sorry, we have to get back to the... That's okay. No problem. Oh, do you have it? What were you going to say, Carlos?
Are you waiting for the 48 hours?
Yes.
I don't think she heard you.
No, yeah. She's looking, she's just looking for the, she's just looking for the slides.
It's the mask and mask conference.
I think it was just the mask conference in November.
Oh.
Yes, I believe that most of you get these at home. Perhaps not the two new members yet, but the MAS C Conference, MAS S MAS C Conference is in November, the 7th to the 10th. Both can go one or multiple days, but it is really helpful if you are interested in going to let Pam know that as soon as possible so that she can register you. And if you... So, talk to them, it's a good, it's a good event, good speakers, and well-run.
Yeah, we've, I've driven down for the day, too, and so, it's doable.
How do you get the flyer? I'm sorry.
I have a flyer.
It's in the packet, it's an end, but you'll get it, you should get it at home.
Have you been getting correspondence from mask at home?
No.
No?
I got it.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Can we make sure we're added? I haven't gotten anything from them, and somebody had mentioned the mask listserv today, and I don't.
Yeah, I can show you how to sign on to that.
Okay.
That's online. And then Pam can send in the form to mask, so just double-check with her that she can.
Yeah, would you like?
Because it's actually.
So, Carrie, will you do that for, Carrie, will you do that for you and Libby? Ask Pam, do you mind doing that? Okay, thank you. All right. All right, any other forty-eight hour items? Nobody? All right. Item nine, Subcommittee and Project Reports. We'll go the opposite ways, we'll start with Carlos. Do you have any long-range planning updates?
We had a meeting, we, we start discussion of what we want to keep on the forefront. We don't, you know, we hope to meet, we are meeting on the twenty-third of this month, of July. We don't have anything new, but we actually do have something new. Want to talk about, John, the one-third of the one million dollars for Plymouth River?
Yeah, sure, we, the, at the last Long Range Planning Committee fellows' house just to check on where the, the status was of the million-dollar payment from, for the Lions property. And Tom Mayo has informed us that we received one-third of that payment, you know, about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which has been deposited into a gift account, and that the remaining two-thirds of that balance should be coming within the next six months.
That is great news.
That is.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Carlos. Kay, do you have anything for community outreach and/or policy? Policy, I know you do.
Well, policy, we met today.
Yep.
So, it was our first meeting as a new group, and the next meeting will be held on July eighteenth at nine AM. Community outreach, we are waiting, Jamie, do you have an update on when they plan to present? Has there been a meeting arranged?
No.
So, we're waiting really for the results from Stacker, their report about their findings from all of the focus groups.
Correct.
So, once we have a date set for that, we'll let everyone know.
I'll reach out tomorrow and get a status update.
Okay, thanks. But right now, there's not a meeting until we get that report back from Stacker.
Okay, great. Salary negotiations?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we met as a group and reviewed the proposals from the search consultants, and we narrowed it down to two candidates. MASK, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees that conducts searches for superintendents, and NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council. And we are interviewing both groups on Thursday. It's a public meeting, the agenda's already been posted, it's in your packets as a reminder. And we will decide then, we had hoped to have the meetings prior to this and vote tonight, but scheduling didn't work out for those parties and us. So, both firms are, have very extensive experience with superintendent searches in Massachusetts and New England. And Carlos and I are following up on the reference checks, and so, we should have some information on those for Thursday as well. And I will have, tomorrow, I will have the draft minutes from our last meeting to send to everyone, and I'll reformat the questions that we had talked about, so everybody has that prior to going into the meeting. So, that, we'll move ahead with that, which should be helpful. And the other thing, at our last meeting, salary negotiations, I committed to drafting paragraph of, which is in your packets, to post on the MASK listserv of upcoming superintendent searches. And so, it's here, if anybody has any comments. This is not related to their consulting practice, it's general information that's available to anyone, and publicly available, and as a member of the organization, we can post it. So, no matter which consultant we go with, we can still have it up there. So, if anyone had any comments or anything they wanted to add, change? No? Okay. So, then, I will take care of getting this posted, so I think it'd be good for it to be over the summer, when people are looking, they can do that. So, yeah, that's it.
All right, great, thank you. Special Ed Subcommittee met last week prior to, and maybe a little into the CPAC meeting, we went a little over budget on our time. But it was a productive meeting, we were introduced to the new CPAC group, board, and we made some plans about how we're going to continue meeting throughout the year, especially with the new Director of Student Services coming on. So, we're going to try to meet pretty regularly, monthly, probably generally right before CPAC has their meeting, so that we can keep on top of the work plan ideas, or whatever format Dr. Viness just wants to recommend that we, we work through on the work plan. So, we're off to a good start to the summer. And I also attended the CPAC meeting as liaison, and that was, again, a good meeting, and we had Tim's report tonight, which was, which was great. And do you have anything for SNAP, or anything else?
No, I don't, I just, I have a question, but to finish your.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm done.
John, a question for John. Can you, any update on the budget reconciliation, update?
The budget, an update from last week's forecast, you mean? There's really, there's no changes, I mean, the, the changes have gone the other way, so we won't have any significant funds left over. So, you know, we'll just, we will manage this budget, and we'll come in, you know, on target, so, you know.
So, you would not recommend that we move to put some money, set aside some money in the Special Education Stabilization Fund, subject to available funds?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't believe there'll be any, I, I, there won't be any significant monies remaining in this budget, so.
Okay, same.
That was part of the discussion at the Special Ed Subcommittee meeting about budgeting, the forecasting, and how we can get some more, and clarity's not the right word, but how we can maybe understand how the forecasting is working in regards to transportation and some of the contract services, and is there a better way to forecast those? There may not be, but sort of, that's what we were discussing, how we could determine if there's different ways to come up with our forecasting for that purpose, so.
Right, well, I mean, forecasting and budgeting, I mean, there's, there's some science to many things of schedule. We schedule transportation based on what we know.
Right.
You know, and that the, you know, rates that may be somewhat increased, or we'll have bid prices, we'll, we'll know what those rates are. But, but, you know, we have to keep in mind always, when we're scheduling these things, we're working in October for something that's going to happen, not until the next September, you know, and a lot changes in a year. So, I mean, so, transportation is that, when you come down to the services, you know, once again, you could, there's, there's probably, I mean, we have historical data, we can look at how many hours were there, or we can try to look at specific hours. And, you know, and even if we looked at specific hours and we realized, wow, this year, this is going to go up a couple hundred thousand dollars, would we really move the budget there? You know, because you never, you don't really know it's going to be there for sure, so, you know, you may say, "I have to grow this budget," and you want to grow the budget in any category, sort of on a slower basis, because otherwise, if you take every single conservative measure that you could take, next thing you know, you have a huge budget, and we're, and if we get that budget, we're really taking money away from the rest of the towns, too. So, typically, when we see some growth in some areas, we try to move them slowly. That's why transportation, I've been under for so long, although this year, if you notice, in FY nineteen, I went from three seventy-five, I'm up to five hundred and four thousand dollars, because after two years of pain, we just have to, you know, show that, because it's going to be within that vicinity, based on the schedule of the, of what we believe transportation will be, you know? It was, those were scheduled out, based on known factors. They, they may change, but, you know, between that time that we did that budget and what we really experienced in September, but past couple of years, the budget has been significantly higher than when I budgeted for transportation, so I don't think that's going to back down, you know? And then, contract services, this is a, this is an increase this year, but we don't know that that's going to happen next year. And then also, too, you know, another thought I was thinking about, you know, last week, if, if we knew the hours, even if we knew the hours, and if we look at the hourly rate for contracted ABA, we can't hire a person for that kind of money. The economics don't say, you know, well, let's hire a person, because we can save money by hiring a person, because the, the rates, if you look at the rates per hour and the way you would schedule, it's still higher to have an employee that will grow in place for the six and a half hours a day that we'll get out of them. And so, so the prudent use of contractors do make sense, you know?
Okay.
But, you know, clearly, next year, too, we'll look at that contract service during the budget process a lot closer, and, you know, see if we can, you know, refine it into some of the, into some of the specific services. We won't identify it in the budget, but we'll certainly have detail on it in my, my detail sheets when we, you know, come up with that number, you know?
Yeah, all right, thank you. And, oh, yes, sorry.
Do you, if you've done it before?
Uh, sorry?
For special ed?
Oh, yes, sure.
Okay, so, thank you. So, Christine Smith to Park Circle, and I sat in your seats for many years, and chair as well. And part of those years was, so, two thousand and nine, we had to pick slip forty-six teachers, so I, I know what it's like to be in the hot seat, and I know what it's like to deal with controversy. And, you know, I came tonight to hear the CPAC report and also to support the AD, and I hadn't been to a school committee meeting for a while, and there was a lot of upset people based upon, you know, some of the comments that were made, and people can make their public comments, but I know a lot of you are new. And one of the things that, that I recall and really helped guide me throughout the process was, it was actually Don Ferris' predecessor, David Calori, and he said, "I have one word for you to get through this process and to be respectful, and that's modeling, and modeling your behavior, to model yourself after how you would like your students to act, how you would like your teachers to act, and how you would like your administrators to act." And when I walked in a little bit late, and I, you know, I was listening to the controversy about what was happening at the high school, and everyone was talking about respect, about inclusion, and what immediately followed, I didn't know where that came from, it had nothing to do with the matter at hand, and the level of disrespect that that showed, I think, for the current administration, got me thinking about it more, as you put up the post for an upcoming superintendent search. If, you can't make everybody happy all the time, but as you look at needing to hire a new superintendent after, you know, a lifetime of opportunities, you know, given to students and to taxpayers in this town due to Dr. Gallo and, you know, Dr. LeBilois, he's new, I worry that type of comment, gone unchecked, nobody's going to want one for these positions, and nobody's going to want to be sitting in that superintendent seat. And I have a real fear for public education in this country, I think we're good in Hingham, but I, I was completely horrified by what was allowed to take place, the level of disrespect that that showed. And I, I didn't stand up at the time, not because I was afraid to, because I did not want to add fuel to the fire. A personal attack like that is unacceptable, you wouldn't allow it at the high school amongst your teachers, you wouldn't allow it amongst the students, and you shouldn't allow it here, because it was wrong. So, I don't know the whole, the whole backstory, but that was, that was wrong. And then, listening to the CPAC report, I, I thought, wow, compared to when I was on this committee many years ago, we didn't have a CPAC. So, I think we've come a very long way in making amends to, you know, nothing is perfect, and people tried their best to fix it, they're volunteers when specific questions are being asked about attorneys. I can't tell you the number of times we've had to call just friends in town, that I wouldn't necessarily publicly announce their name, but the treasure trove of talent that we have in this town, that you can pick up the phone and call and not be charged with anything, because it's the right thing to do. If this continues, it's not going to happen anymore. So, there's, it was just one comment, but there's a lot at risk, and I just, you can feel free to call me anytime about any experience, but modeling for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if that is it for Subcommittee and Project Reports, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Will I make a motion?
Thank you, do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? No, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need to adjourn.